The Bristol Board of Education. Maintaining a safe and secure learning environment for all students.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our November 6th Board of Education meeting. If this is your first time here this evening during public comment, you're welcome to speak. And there's a sign up sheet on the table over to my right, your left. If you'd like to speak, we'd just like to name an address for the record so if we have to get back to you. This evening, we're going to have, as we do each month, we're going to have a national anthem sung by our Bristol Eastern Pep Band, student led. And then if you remain standing, we do the pledge afterwards. We thank the Pep Bands for joining us this evening. Always enjoy having our music displayed here at the board meeting. At this time, we'd like to have a moment of silence for some faculty that have passed on. Kenneth Biladu was a teacher at Patterson, O'Connell, Stafford, and Northeast School from 1953 through 1962. Arlene Growth was a teacher at Stafford School from 1968 to 1971. Ron Meisnikowski, a science teacher at Bristol Central High School from 1956 to 1992. And Richard Ciara, a science teacher from Bristol Central High School from 1969 to Every meeting before we start at the Board of Education, we are going to focus on our norms that we wish to hold ourselves to in the conduct of our business. So I will read them. And then one of our board members, Jen Doobie, is going to be the norm keeper this evening and will focus on one of our norms. So our norms are: All participants have equal voice and airtime is shared. Assume positive intentions. Be honest and open to cultivate trust. Respect and honor diversity of opinions, beliefs, and perspectives. Focus on ideas, practices, and the work, not people. Maintain active participation. Engage in the work of the meeting. And disagree respectfully. Now Jen will give us the norm we're going to focus on.
We are going to focus on respecting and honoring diversity of opinions, beliefs, and perspectives.
So you'll be our norm keeper and at the conclusion of the meeting, we'll find out how we did. The next item on our agenda is staff and student recognition, and I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Good evening. We have a series of students and staff that we will recognize this evening. Ms. Fortin will lead off our recognition.
So we wanted to thank our many schools that entered the MUM Festival Parade this year and highlighted the efforts of our students and our teachers. But we wanted to recognize one group in particular because they happened to win an award at the MUM Festival Parade, and that was our avid group. So we have some teachers here today and some students. And one student's going to tell you a little bit more about what their experience was in the parade. So the avid teachers we have here are Mark Kilray, Carolyn Kilma, you guys could stand if you would like, Cara Jandro, Corey Nagel, and I don't believe I'm missing any other teachers. And our students, we have Alyssa Gonzalez, Esmeralda Morales, Sabrina Orasco, I think I had that right, Pushpita Hussain, Sienna Sampson, and to speak about their avid float, Gabrielle Asialdo. Come on up.
So at the MUM Parade Festival, the avid class, both Central and Eastern, had a float that was about going to college. Around the float, we had a beanstalk that was made by the freshman class, myav class, with Ms. Jandro as our teacher. It had the subjects on it. And when the mayor came over and gave us the mayor award, it was a magnet that we got to put on and display, which was really, really cool. So when the parades first kicked off, I think there were a lot more people than anyone expected. There were definitely a lot of children and adults, and everyone wanted candy. It was about, I mean, everyone. It was about a two, two or like one and a half mile walk. And we had to keep going back and forth from the float to the road, just trying to hand it all out. Near the end, where I think is where most of the people were. And it was just a really great experience, being able to get the word about the avid program out there and inspire children to continue learning. Because I know that, like, before it was ever mentioned to me, I didn't know that there was ever a program like this out there to help me get into college or to help me, or to teach me things that I wouldn't be able to learn in a regular class. And it was just a really great experience.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you for having us. So next, I have, I'd like to recognize Dr. Corey Nagel again, who you saw as one of our avid teachers. He is a science teacher and avid elective teacher at Bristol Central High School. And he recently shared with us that a study that he co-authored was published in the Electronic Journal of Science Educators. He and John L. Picor studied a veteran's science teacher's transition to national, the next generation's science standards. We wanted to recognize Corey's contribution to the field of science at the national level and his contributions to what he does for our students here at Bristol Public Schools. And I have a copy of the article in case anybody would like to read that.
So the Electronic Journal for Science Education is actually an open access one, so you can Google it and find it. And all of the articles in that one, it's peer reviewed and it's free to access.
And the honors keep coming. We also wanted to recognize and highlight a Bristol Central graduate who received a national recognition and scholarship. Stephen Pittman from the class of 2019 won the American Classical League Scholarship. Stephen became eligible for this award as a high school senior because he won a gold medal in his Latin exams under the tutelage of Mrs. Monahan DeNoya, who is here. Yes? And then Stephen continued to pursue his study of Latin by enrolling in two semesters as a freshman. This award is pretty prestigious. I think it's the first that Mrs. Monahan DeNoya's had in her 32 years. So we're very proud of Stephen and Mrs. Monahan DeNoya because certainly with her passion and purpose, we see our students continuing to pursue their passion and purpose once they leave our school. Next, last but not least, Bristol supported the Bristol NAACP's request to have students attend the Great Debate. 160 students from our middle and high schools attended. And we, you might have heard this name mentioned earlier, Pushpita Hussain, one of our avid students. She wanted to share a bit about her experience with the Great Debate.
Oh my gosh, all right. Good evening. My name is Pushpita Hussain. I am a freshman at Bristol Eastern High School as well as a student in the avid program. I recently attended the Great Debate between Harvard and Howard University. In my class, my avid teacher mentioned that we were going on a field trip to the Harvard Excel Center. In the beginning, when I first heard about this debate, I didn't know what to think of it. I've never really seen an actual debate before, so this is going to be something new for me. This was so new that I didn't even know whether or not there were going to be seats for us to sit so that I could wear some heels. But when we got there, I was so into the debate. I was screaming and cheering so much that my voice became hoarse by the end. I was so energized and super enthusiastic during the whole event. The teams that were debating were between Harvard University and Howard University. There were four people on each team debating on two topics. The first topic was about if the House of Representatives should pursue the impeachment of President Donald Trump. The second topic was about the Jay-Z's company, Roc Nation, should enter a partnership with the NFL. These topics were part of the many reasons why I was so enthusiastic about it. The arguments were things that we, as the audience, could relate to, which brought such excitement every time each of them spoke. The teams were made up of both males and females, all from different cultures and backgrounds. There was a girl on the Howard team who was Muslim and wearing a headscarf, which we call a hijab. Seeing her shocked and excited me to see her present. The diversity within the teams made many of us proud that we can see someone like us go up and debate in front of so many people. It allowed me to have more confidence that I can too do many things in the future. The debate was set up so that one person from each team would go up and would give reasons and explanations to defend their side. They had to speak quickly just to get their point across. We were cheering them on as much as we could, laughing and screaming at the many remarks they had made. From the beginning to the end, they gave us a lot of entertainment and amusement along with these controversial topics. At the end, both teams shook hands with each other, showing their respect. There was so many people there, from the governors, state representatives, teachers, administration, and age, school age students. We, as this audience, gave them as much support as we could. They made us laugh continuously and were very inspiring. We were extremely thrilled to see such an amazing event. It made me want to voice my opinion about certain topics, and I'm sure it inspired many to do as well. Thank you to the board who allowed us to attend the debate with the avid program. Please continue to give your support for programs like avid in the future, which gave us the chance to feel that we can be successful and achieve amazing things. Once again, thank you.
We have one more honor for one of our teachers, and Dr. Dieter will be our spokesperson this evening.
Good evening, commissioners. This award is recognizing Lisa Gelski, who is a physical education teacher at Southside School. Lisa is going to be recognized by the Connecticut Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance. Almost as tough to say as Memorial Boulevard Intro District Arts Magnet School. All right. She is being recognized for her leadership efforts promoting health and well-being and happiness through physical activity. So we want to, we recognize that this is a prestigious award by a professional organization in the state, and we thank you for your efforts on behalf of students here in Bristol.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes. You received the minutes in your packets. I would entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion's been properly made and seconded. Are there any additions, corrections, deletions? Sensing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Abstentions? Oh, abstentions, okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda is committee reports, and we only have one committee report this month, Finance Committee. Commissioner Vibbert.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick overview, and then I'm going to pass it along for some in-depth analysis. Some of the things that we've been doing, we've deployed 1,000 new Chromebooks out to the schools for student use, and we are able to repurpose the, they call them end of life, but they're absolutely fine, they just can't be used for testing. So those have been repurposed towards some of the classrooms in the lower grades. We've saved some money on moving all district computers from Novell to Active Directory. Saved approximately $23,000 a year in fees. Another one, the City IT Department, working together with our IT department. In the first quarter, saved $25,000. That's something we've been working on for a few years to get done, to have that partnership, and it's going along very, very well now. For the details, I'm going to pass it along to Jill and Kim.
Thank you. And the savings that you just mentioned came from the joint venture with our printing and copying with Office Works. That was where those savings were realized. I did submit an end of quarter one report, and that summary gave a snapshot as of the end of September 30th. And at that time, Board of Education was not running over budget in any general character area of the budget, including special education. I will give you a glimpse, at the end of October, we are still looking good with regard to special education, and we'll go over that at our next finance meeting together later this month. Commissioner Vibbert had talked a little bit about some of the savings realized through our partnership with City IT, and I just want to again thank them for their support of the Board of Education and bringing about efficiencies and standardization of all aspects of technology and support throughout the school district. We're working well together, and we're very appreciative of that. With regard to appropriations and transfers, there was nothing of significance in the way of transfers for the month of September. And then cafeteria report, at the end of September, district-wide lunches, lunch participation had increased by an average of 300 lunches per day, no doubt due to Bristol Central coming on to CEP. The average there has gone up, as of the end of September, 225 lunches per day, which is great. On average, the breakfast count increased by 15 breakfasts per day. District-wide, that's not a great number. We took a closer look at that, and we saw that Chippens Hill had decreased in participation quite a bit, but that's coming up now and getting back to where it was. Of course, with taking on a new school onto CEP, the lunch cash sale comparison, we're down 12,700 in comparison to last year. But when you look at our revenue that we qualify for and reimbursement, that's up 14,200. So if the question is, are we doing okay with taking on a new school with CEP, yes we are. So overall, that is my report. And if you have any questions, we'll have Kim Culkin update you with special education
Good evening, commissioners. As I had shared at the Finance Committee, our special education enrollment in the district as of our October 1st student count of 8,300 students, of those students, we had 1,669 students identified as requiring special education. That's a 20.1% enrollment calculation of those students. That's our identification rate. At that time last year, as of October 1st last year, our identification rate was 19.5. So we're not far off from where we were last year. As a point of reference, I know that there had been a recent Alliance Symposium that had indicated that there are Alliance districts that are running as high as a 29% identification rate. So this coming month, I'll obviously report and update you on the October 1st, excuse me, on the November numbers. But for right now, our budget is operating smoothly, and our identification rate is holding steady as to where we were last year. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. There's no other reports, so I'll move right to my report. On October 22nd, I had the opportunity to attend a special education symposium put on by CADE and attorneys Christine Chinney, Fred Dorsey, Rebecca Santiago, and Michael McKeon, all from different law firms who specialize in special education throughout the state. It was a good primer, as well as some in-depth information. So I asked Susan Everett if she would attach those documents to you so that if you couldn't attend, at least you can see the information in the PowerPoints. So they're attached there for your benefit. The second item is, this week, I attended a session between CADE and CAPS Executive Committees. There's a big concern among the leaderships of both those organizations about the high rate of turnover of superintendents. So the two groups are trying to get together and put together some, a working document that will help those organizations intercede into those districts who ask for help, either from the superintendent or their board chair. Give you an example of some of the turnover. In a district like Greenwich, they have had 14 superintendents in 20 years. Some of our other urban districts have a high rate of turnover as well, and that's never good for our schools to incur that kind of turnover. So it's very important that we work on trying to give boards of education the tools that they can work together collaboratively with their superintendent and themselves. And there's full support from Miguel Cardona, who is the new Commissioner of Education, and he is working with the two organizations to develop a toolkit so that we can help those districts who are experiencing dysfunction. And as you all know, we had an election yesterday, and you know, during this time, it's probably all a little bittersweet for some and elation for others. And so today, we're here to celebrate that. And at the conclusion of this meeting, we're going to have a little cake, no ice cream or milk with that cake, but we are going to have cake afterwards. And we ask you all if you'd like to, you know, stay around and celebrate with those that will be going off and those that will be coming on. There's two people I want to highlight in particular this evening that will be going off. One, Commissioner Cagiano could not be here because he had a business commitment, but we want to thank Commissioner Cagiano for his loyal and dedicated service over the last four years. He has been a very engaged commissioner, who's very interested in education and came with opinions and input that really helped to move the Board of Education forward in its decisions and policymaking. And then the other commissioner will be going off is someone that came to us from kind of a different situation. Commissioner Grabowski was hanging around a baseball game when he was about 17 years old, wasn't even really eligible to vote, and someone brought up the idea about him being a Commissioner of Education. And when it first came to me, it was like, hmm, I don't know about that, an 18-year-old on the Board of Ed. But you know, this has been a real eye-opening experience for me and I think the board. And we are so much better for having Joe's service over these four years. And it's been enjoyable for me to see this young man grow up to be a full man. Now, he has worked his way through school, full honors the whole way. He didn't get much help, so not only did he work full-time or three-quarter time, but he also participated fully in the board. He always came prepared. He always asked me questions if he didn't understand any of the issues, or he wanted to understand the nuance of the issues. And you know, we're really pleased to have had Joe share his time with us. He gave us a very unique perspective as a student who had just graduated, so he really illuminated us on some of the issues that are really going on in school. So you know, we have a bittersweet that you'll be passing on, but we know that we'll keep in touch with you, and we thank you so much for your service. At this point, the superintendent is going to, you going to make some comments down?
I will make comments during my superintendent.
Okay, all right.
Chairman Wilson?
Yeah.
I just wanted, just a point on the chairman's report. I did go through the documentation from, that you did post or asked them to post on the Spotlight for Special Education. And I did review it, and we appreciate you providing that for us to review because I think it's important to see the types of seminars and trainings that CADE makes available to us. So do you have some feedback though on some of that documentation I'd like to share with you, seeing as how you're a member of the CADE Board, to bring back some of that feedback from what was presented in that meeting? So I will follow up with an email to you directly.
Okay, sure. At this point, we'll move right on to the Student Representative Report, and this evening, we have Catherine Fung, who will be reporting for Bristol Central.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Catherine Fung, Bristol Central Senior Representative. And the school year is a quarter of the way done, and right now, we are in the midst of Spirit Week at Bristol Central. Today was Jersey Day, so the school got to wear their favorite sports team's jerseys. Monday was Meme Day. Thursday will be Class Colors, and we round out the week with maroon and white. Following Spirit Week is the Homecoming Dance on Saturday, so this week is filled with a lot of fun stuff and school spirit. So as a senior, Spirit Week is just the beginning of a very busy school year. Applications are underway, and scholarship season has just begun. Every Friday in Guidance, there are new scholarships available for students. The Bristol Technical Education Center's Open House was October 23rd, and the University of New Haven's On-Site Decision Day will be December 4th this year. FAFSA Day was October 19th for parents and students to learn more about completing their FAFSA forms. And the number of attendees that came were impressive. Events like Financial Aid Night and FAFSA Day are major helping hands to students who look to pursue a college education. For students wishing to pursue a career in the military, there was an option to take the ASVAB test during the school day in October on the 18th. This year, I've been honored to go on a few writing initiative field trips, chosen by Ms. Dickow, to the Connecticut Forum. I've attended the Seth Meyers interview and the Tequila Mockingbird play in New York City. The trips have been a unique experience that I am very grateful for. Additionally, there was a freshman field trip to Pine Lake on the 18th that I did not go on, where students were able to engage in team-building exercises and fun challenges. Also, we did have the Great Debate, where Mr. Plord was the chaperone on the 28th. The fall season has had a lot of promising events in the sports department. Swim, soccer, football, and cross-country have all had games and matches, and the Ram Mountain has been an excellent cheering section for every sports game. Coming up is the Thanksgiving Day Game and our Powder Puff charity event. Powder Puff is on November 23rd this year, and unfortunately, the NHS Dodgeball Tournament was postponed to the spring, so more teams have time to join. Bristol Eastern students are also encouraged to join the tournament. The Central Band performed their opening gala concert to kick off the beginning of their halftime performances early in October on the 11th. Parent-teacher conferences were the 22nd through the 24th of October, and the class of 2020 ran a bake sale. Also that week was the Italian exchange students visiting, and our Italian students get to visit Italy in February. Almost main, a central stage performance is coming up on November 22nd and 23rd at 7:30, and November 24th at 2 o'clock. Lastly, I would like to update the board on Bristol Central's daily advisory. So far, we've had a few extended ramly time advisories, one being today, and another being this past month for bullying awareness. The students and teachers have both given feedback about advisory, and as a Rambaster, I can see the effort putting in to make daily advisories as beneficial as possible. Thank you and good evening.
Madison Turner from Bristol Eastern.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Madison Turner, the junior class liaison for Bristol Eastern High School. And I'm speaking this evening to give you an update on our school's events and activities in the month of October. For sports, our volleyball team is ranked number one in the state and is currently in tournament action and won out of eight, eight out of eight games last month. Congrats to our boys soccer team and their contributions to helping Coach Sweet reach an incredible milestone of 400 career wins, and also to Jake Wasnicki, who has broken our school's scoring record. Cross-country girls won against Bristol Central for the state championship. For community, our recent blood drive had a great turnout. We were able to take enough blood donations to save over We were able to take enough blood donations to save over 60 lives. Leadership Council's shoe drive collected 178 pairs of shoes for the United Way. Thanks to Mrs. Hyde and the Friends of Rachel Club, their car wash raising almost $600 for cancer research, which was a huge success. The club also sponsored the showing of the anti-bullying movie Cyberbully to help with the October theme of anti-bullying awareness. Big shout-out to Mrs. Adams and Mrs. Delania for their efforts in organizing the Thirst Project Initiative. We had two great audiences, and our guest was overwhelmed by the BEHS spirit that was demonstrated. Science students went to the Bristol Water Department to learn about the process of obtaining clean water and the hardships that those without clean water endure. The Bristol Eastern Theater Arts put together an amazing fall play, Charlotte's Web, and they took a few trips to some local elementary schools to share their performance. For academics, PSATs were held for all students in grades nine through 11. Our guidance team held Financial Aid Senior Planning Seminars in recent weeks. These include the College and Career Night, which had over 100 colleges present, and our College Goal Sunday, which helped families prepare for the financial aspects of college education. Avid students got to attend in Hartford, to see Harvard face off against Howard University students in the Great Debate. In upcoming events, we are going to continue our yearly citywide family luncheon and celebration on November 21st, and BOE members are welcome to attend. Also coming up is our pep rally and battle for the bell on Thanksgiving, with Spirit Week leading up to it. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
I do want to invite the students to the CAPE Convention. I think I've mentioned it before, but it'll be November 16th. There's a student panel session, and there's student sessions. I think some of you might have been there last year. We really encourage you to come. There's a panel discussion of students from other schools around the state and talk about topical issues relative to students and what's concerned students. So I hope you can fill in your schedule. See you there. Now we turn to the superintendent and her report.
Good evening, Commissioners. I will be reporting and reminding our viewing public of our four district priorities. I will speak specifically to two of the priorities this evening. The four in total are organizational and operational effectiveness, community engagement and partnerships, inspiring and cultivating talent, and learner-focused. I share with the Board the work of the District Improvement Team and want to remind both the public that's here this evening, our Board Commissioners, and our viewing audience that during Dr. Wast's time, the district committed to school accountability and improvement and created a data-driven mindset, which shows up in one of the core values of accountability and excellence. For us to be both accountable to the public and excellent in all of our actions, the District Improvement Team has identified key areas of success for the next five years. Unlike the statistic that Commissioner Wilson shared with you about the longevity of superintendencies, I choose to think that I will look like the gentleman on the wall. Not that haggard at the end, but that I will be here for quite some time. So some of these data points look to 2024. I'm going to share some of them this evening. By 2024, 75% of our students will enroll in a two- or four-year college experience. Currently, 63% of our students are enrolled in a two- or four-year college experience. By 2024, 95% of our students will graduate on time. 72% of our students will take a college credit-bearing course or will have had a career experience while in high school. 63% of our eighth-grade students will demonstrate the skills needed to be successful in algebra. That number may seem low, but I do need to turn people's attention to the fact that last year, 38% of our students were successful in our SBA algebra assessment. By 2024, 70% of our third-grade students will be reading at grade level. And by 2021, in two years, 100% of our students in grades three through 12 will be able to identify an adult within the school that offers support and guidance. And the reason why that is a two-year marker, we don't have a baseline. And so this year, we will establish the baseline, and in two years, by 2021, every child should be able to identify a caring adult. So when I hear our high schoolers talk about Ramly Time, it's an action item that lets us know that our high schools, as well as our elementary through crew or PAC, are developing the skills and also the relationship building so that students do find their caring adult. Around the district priority, organizational and operational effectiveness, I want to talk about three things that have occurred during the past month. The Central Office Team will launch our budget process December 3rd. We will be meeting with our building and department-level leaders to start the process. Mr. Wilson, our Bristol Public Schools Director of Safety and Security, has observed all of our schools' crisis teams during a variety of their safety drills and provided feedback. And lastly, our vulnerability assessments continue. We have conducted vulnerability assessments linked to our crisis team in Bristol Central, Bristol Eastern, Edgewood, Southside, and tomorrow, we will be at Green Hills. Lastly, dates of importance. With the election, there will need to be onboarding of our new board members. There are tentative dates of November 18th and 19th. In relation to our budget process, the Board of Education Budget Workshops have been set for the dates of January 21st and January 29th, with snow dates being January 23rd and January 30th. And lastly, as Commissioner Wilson had shared, it is my opportunity to thank both Commissioner Cagiano and Commissioner Grabowski for their support. It's bittersweet, since you are the Board that brought me in. And to echo the words of Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Cagiano has a passion and brought his passion to the Board and pushed the thinking of the Board on numerous issues. And it is through that civic dialogue that it's important that we recognize that that's why we have a democracy. And speaking of a democracy, when our own school system produces a commissioner because they were inspired, sitting in a social studies class in Northeast, we know that the value of the public education system holds true. And so congratulations on your next stage in your career as an educator, and thank you for your service. On behalf of the School Board, we have a few tokens of appreciation. A favorite book of both of the Commissioners will be dedicated to the library of the school of which they represent. And fittingly, the book is "Oh, The Places You Will Go." And lastly, a token of our appreciation, a thank-you gift, recognition for your service, and of course, being able to come to all sporting events in Pacey for the rest of your life. And Commissioner Dubey will accept in place of Commissioner Cagiano.
Okay, now we move on to, don't forget that cake, it's still sitting out there.
Students, if you would like to go home and do your homework and/or go home and go on social media, feel free, you can sneak out.
I want to wait for cake.
Or you can stay for cake. Okay, cake it is.
We now move to our consent agenda. And does anybody wish to pull anything out of our consent agenda?
Yes, please. I would like to pull out two items. 8.1A, not A, I'm sorry, 8.1A and 8.1C.
Does anybody else have anything else they wish to pull out? If not, I think you're ready to vote. Does someone entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda without 8.1A and 8.1B?
C. Still moved.
Second.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Yes, I'd like to ask the superintendent, those two items. We'd like to recognize some administrators.
We would. So first, I would like to recognize Assistant Principal Martha Nobelski from West Bristol. Marty, if you wouldn't mind standing. Tonight is bittersweet on many, many levels, and Marty has worked for the Bristol Public Schools for 27 years as both a teacher and administrator, and 46 years in totality as an educator. And so as much as we appreciate the fact that you would like to do other things with your time and in the near future, we are indebted to your service to the students and families of Bristol.
I'd like to echo your sentiments. I've had a longstanding, excellent relationship with Mrs. Nobelski in the last seven years that my child has been at West Bristol. And I have to say that many of the successes that we have celebrated together through my child's education, Marty, has been a very key part in that role, and I want to especially thank you very much for all that you've done.
With retirement, we also have the recognition of the appointment of the new principal of Bristol Eastern High School. And I would like to invite and introduce to you, not a stranger, in true fashion of Bristol's best, we educate and grow our own, and as a former Bristol Eastern High School graduate, Mr. Michael Higgins as the next principal of Bristol Eastern High School. Mr. Higgins, would you like to say a few words?
Wasn't quite prepared to speak, but thank you for the opportunity to do so. As I said previously, I'm humbled and honored to be here as the new principal of Bristol Eastern High School, as a product of Ivy Drive Northeast and Bristol Eastern. I can't think of a better place or any other place I would rather be for my profession. Bristol Public Schools has given me so very much. I feel like I could literally thank every single person in this room. I know just about everybody here, and they've all played a role in helping me. Just to thank a few people, starting with my wife, who I met when I was 19 and looking more like Kurt Cobain than I do right now. She's helped me and guided me in more ways than one, and I thank you. I want to also thank Carly Fortin, who I've also known longer than I've known my wife, and who has shown me what it means to be relentless in the pursuit of giving Bristol children what they need to be successful. Work ethic that is unmatched, I've got big shoes to fill there. I want to thank Pete Wininger for also being a mentor and giving me encouragement and laughs and guidance along the way. And I don't know if Dr. Galloway remembers this, but several years ago, we had a conversation about leadership, and we talked for a while, and I left with three words kind of running around in my head, and they all began with Vs, so they're easy to remember, and I never forgot them. Voice, vision, and visibility were things that we talked about in that conversation. And as I think about them more and more and step into this role, I think about voice in terms of giving voice to students and to staff members and to the people in our building and community. Sharing a vision, developing and sharing that vision abroad, and being visible and being available and supporting the people that I work for and with. So I'm really beyond excited. I'm ready to roll up my sleeves. The people that are with us here, they are Lancer Family. We have a very proud house, and we're ready to do everything we can to make sure the kids succeed there.
So that's an unprepared statement. We expect you to be back next month with a prepared statement. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So now we need to vote on the things that we pulled out of that consent agenda. So I would ask someone to offer up a motion.
As I pulled it out, I will make the motion to approve items 8.1A and 8.1C. Second?
We have a motion that's been properly made and seconded. I don't see any comments, so I think you're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So the consent agenda is complete. We now move to public comment. No one has signed up for public comment. We'll move right on to deliberated items. We will start with 10.1, which is a BC/BE trip to Martinique in February of 2020, and I believe it's a...
Mr. Ward.
Mr. Ward, and he's going to tell us about a date change.
Good evening, Commissioners. So I would like to ask for motion approving the proposed changes to an upcoming trip to Martinique. The trip was originally scheduled for February 14th to February 20th, which is the Friday, the Thursday, the Friday before President's Day to the Thursday afterwards. Their revised dates are the 12th to the 17th, which is the Wednesday before President's Day weekend to the Monday of. Norwegian Airlines canceled the route that the trip was supposed to be taking, so they rescheduled the JetBlue, which only flies the route on Wednesdays and Mondays, hence the change in dates. So if I can answer any questions, but otherwise, I'm just asking you to approve those change in dates.
So we originally approved this motion back in December of '18, and so now all we're doing is approving the change of the dates. So if someone wants to make that motion, you going to make that motion? Karen?
Get those poor kids off Norwegian Air.
And did we get a second? I wasn't sure. We got a second. Okay, the motion has been properly made and seconded. Any further comments or questions? If not, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we will move on to our Latin trip to Italy. Mr. Ward is going to handle that again, I can tell.
Actually, I'm going to pass that one off.
Oh, you are?
I am. So I would like to introduce Kelly Monahan-Denoya, who's requesting permission to plan a trip to Italy in late June of 2021.
Good evening and thank you, Dr. Carbone. Thank you, Dr. Dieter, and Commissioners. This is my 12th time requesting permission to take my students of Latin abroad. I always try to ask two years in advance because if you've looked at the paperwork, it's not cheap. It's an expensive trip, and I like to give the families as long as possible to save for the trip. It's the same trip that the students have chosen, the same trip that we've done probably the last five or six years. We start out in Venice, we spend a few days in Venice. We then go to Florence, and then down to Pompeii and Sorrento and Naples and the island of Capri. And then we always, I like to end in Rome. It's my favorite city in the world. So we end in Rome. I happened to run into Commissioner O'Brien last night, and I said to him, will I see you tomorrow night? And he said yes. And I promised him something more exciting than my telling you, something I've told you many times before. I promised him, as I said, something a little bit more exciting. And so instead of my standing here telling you the value of our students traveling to foreign lands, I thought I'd call upon a couple of my students who went on this trip with me just this past summer. trip with me just this past summer. One of them, you know very well, Katie Funk, your representative. And then John Lucas Savage is also going to come to the microphone, come to the podium, and tell you a little bit about our trip and the values of it. Katie, would you come first, please?
So I really enjoyed my trip to Italy. And when I got back, I was always asked what my favorite part was. And because we went to so many different places, I really couldn't decide. In Venice, I was so excited to see Murano Glassmakers actually making glass in front of me. In Tuscany, the view was simply amazing, and so was the food. In Florence, the ancient buildings around the city, like the Baptismal, were awesome. And there was actually a band performing live at night when we went out. In Capri, the water fell extremely great following the big heat wave we had. In Sorrento, it was just a picturesque view off the cliff, and it was amazing. In San Giugnano, there was actually a puppeteer performing in the square. And I got to eat at the Pope's favorite gelateria. In Rome, Pompeii was awesome, and as great as Ms. MD said it was. And we also got to participate in a gladiator school. The experience I had was really like no other, and I got to see so many different things. I also remember learning so much, because there is little details that otherwise I'd pass over just traveling on my own. Our tour guide, Mariana, was a pro in sharing those tidbits. One that stood out to me was when we were in Rome, she told us about placemakers on the ground in the stone streets memorializing Jews who died in the Holocaust and lived in Rome. So when you walked in the street, you could look down and see a little gold placemaker with their name on it. So I think going to Italy and seeing all these different experiences and having such a great time is something that everyone should have. So thank you.
Hi, everyone. I know quite a few of you, but I'm just here to talk about the trip to Italy. I will save you the summary. Katie did a very good job. But one thing I wanted to touch on was that this trip to Italy prepared kids for college in a unique way, where most kids don't know what it's like to live with other people other than their family. But going to Italy and spending 10 days with people you otherwise wouldn't live with is quite the experience. And I feel like a lot of people got a chance to live life a little differently. Obviously, Italy was amazing. It was very informative. The tour guide was wonderful, and also Ms. MD knows quite a lot about Italy. It was very nice, and I would go on it again and again. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would like to request your permission to plan another trip to Italy with my students for the summer of 2021. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I just had one comment, and I just wanted to say, on top of hearing the experiences of the kids that get to go, I also really want to take a shout out to the teachers that take their personal time to organize these events and are willing to take kids away to other countries and take on this planning and responsibility. And we should be very grateful that we have volunteers in our district and staff that are willing to do this.
Are the children going to be speaking Latin the entire trip?
Yes, from the day we, from the moment we leave. I do speak Latin. I really want to say at them, at them while we're there. But they participate quite enthusiastically. Yes.
And you're going to be seeing a Rolling Stones concert, obviously. That's a fellow sport, right?
John and I had some fun on this particular trip as we were walking through the town of Sorrento at night, coming back from our Tarantella lesson that we had. We decided to play Name That Tune. And I'll tell you, John can hold his own with dad rock. John knows dad rock. He knows song lyrics, he knows bands, he knows years, he knows album titles. He's pretty, he's pretty good.
Any more comments? I think you're ready to vote, so would someone offer up a motion?
Second.
Wait a minute. Let's word the motion. So we're going to travel to, in June of 2021?
Correct.
Is this after school?
It is. We always go, so I'll make the final decision by the end of January of 2021, based upon how many snow days we've had. Then it's a gamble.
So motions are made to travel, authorize travel in June of 2021. And we have a second? We have a second? Motion's been properly made and seconded. Any further comment? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, as always. Our next item is our superintendent needs to get permission to be authorized as a signatory for monthly federal reimbursement claims for child nutrition program. Sort of one of those bureaucratic things that when you bring in a new superintendent, you need to make that authorization. So we will ask someone to make that motion to approve Dr. Katherine Carbone, superintendent of the school, as an authorized signatory for the monthly federal reimbursement claims for child nutrition program.
Still moved.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further comment? If not, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Dr. Galloway. October 1 enrollment report. Mr. O'Brien has been waiting for a whole month.
Me too. Good evening, Commissioners. I'll take the mystery out of this report right in the beginning. We often talk about two different overall numbers. Students who are currently in the seats, and then we talk about students in the seats and students who are outplaced. So I'll just tell you upfront, this year's count for students overall is 8,368 versus last year, 8,336. That's the overall count, comparison from year to year. Students in seats this year, 7,909. Last year, 7,881. So I just wanted to inform you that the numbers from year to year don't change that much, but we do experience a lot of movement throughout the school year. The towns where students are coming from most frequently at this point, as we are tracking, are New Britain, Waterbury, and Hartford. That being said, that's the big mystery in this report. I'll go school by school now to talk about the sections. At Edgewood School, the sections are stable at this point, as you can see, two kindergarten, two first grade, two second, two third, two fourth, and there are three for fifth grade, with a total student count of 285. I will not go count for count with every school. I'll move down to Hubble School, where their total student count at this point in time is 410 students. That's only down four students from last year. And this report, Commissioners, was pulled October 1st at 3:00 PM. Green Hill School, going from the pre-K count into grade five, this year's count is 637 versus last year's 625, a plus up of 12. Ivy Drive School, this year's count, 374 versus last year of 386. Mountain View, 345 versus 366 from last year. Southside School, 507, 507. Any questions on the first page? Okay, I'll move on. Going on to Stafford School, this year's count, 376 versus 374 from last year. West Bristol, 608 versus 581. And we've, I'm in constant communication with our central registration and our registers down there, and we do believe, because of the way the housing structure is in town, that we do experience some of these fluctuations based on how the town is laid out. Going down to our total K5 count for this year, 3,364 versus 3,335. Our elementary class size average is just under 22 students. The Prouda prediction was about 40 students off. Any questions on this page?
I have one quick question about West Bristol. I know it's, as a K-8 school, and I know we've had these discussions before about it having to be, maximize their attendance there as part of the agreement for the building of the K-8 school. But what was the target for total amount of students that needed to be maintained at that school in order to satisfy that requirement? Do you remember?
Always 100 per grade.
100 per grade. Because right now, we're at over 900 students in that school. That number, I remember, used to be in the upper 800s last year, correct?
It was 900.
Was it 900 last year?
Yeah. Class size, grades three and up, because of the way we have our class size ratio, can be up to 28. So we maximize as many seats available, because if there is not a seat available, it becomes an out of area.
Right.
And it usually involves transportation.
Yeah. It's just that when you look at some of the other grade levels and some of the other schools, their class sizes, for example, fifth grade at Edgewood, you know, 18 students, 18, 18, 19. And I know, I understand that the, we're kind of constrained by the housing in that area and what it does there, but is there ever been some thought that if this trend continues, that there are some streets that would actually be redistrict to another school so that we can balance out some of these classroom sizes? Because this seems to be a constant problem at West Bristol. It's up to the max. And then we have other schools that are, you know, 18, 18, 16. There are several of them here. And I'm sure there'd be some relief on teachers in, with less than...
Looking at enrollment patterns, I would, I would say that the enrollment pattern that we, at one time, were told that Bristol would see a decrease in its enrollment, that is not accurate. I think that's the first part of the question.
Total enrollment you're talking about?
Yeah. I think the second part, last year, there was an anomaly in kindergarten, especially at West Bristol. We only had four sections. It was a very low grade across the district, and we're back up to five in West Bristol. So that is the second difference year to year. And thirdly, I would also say that Southside similarly has a fluctuation in its enrollment, because you'll see the sections go from four to three in different grades due to the fact that it could be a plus or minus of 20 students or more.
Southside, though, and Edgewood have traditionally, I mean, at least since I've been on the board, they really have been on the lower ends, even with their minor fluctuations. And so, I guess my point being, at some point, is it worthwhile for us to look at which neighborhood, which neighborhoods might make a difference if we redistrict them to another school, even marginally? Because I would think a teacher, attracting teachers to come to West Bristol, knowing that their classroom's going to be 27 and 28 kids, when they could go to Southside and have a classroom of 18, is probably incentivizing.
The board might want to look at redistricting as a whole. Just bringing it up as a suggestion. Yeah.
Okay, I will continue. I'm on the Chippens Hill page. Grade six, seven, and eight, their count, 762 versus 782. Green Hills, 6, 7, 8, 301 versus 300. Northeast, 480 versus 501. West Bristol, 316 versus 330, for a total count of 1859 for this year, 1913 last year. As you can see, the projection is slightly off. And to Dr. Carbone's point, even looking back at the redistricting study, we seem to be exceeding the high projections year in and year out. Going to the high school, you'll see a similar pattern with Bristol Central being at 1,216 versus 1176 for last year, and this year is 1096 versus 1080. BPA, 40 versus 36, and our total count, 2366 versus 2308. So I'll just go down, when I first started, I gave you the total student count to where there's a responsibility for Bristol, 8,368. To me, when I look at who we have sitting in our seats and who's out of district, that's about a swing of 460 students that we always have to keep in mind. So I'll stop there with the report, pending your questions.
Through the chair. Sam, what year did Prouda last do projections for us? How old are these numbers? I know...
He gives us projections every year.
Every year?
We've been looking back at the redistricting study from Malone and McGroom.
Which is eight, nine, 10 years old at this point?
At least, yeah.
Yeah.
In that range. And looking back even on their high projections, we seem to be exceeding that.
And I know redistricting is the last thing a board wants to do, and sometimes you have to do it, you're going to do it cautiously, carefully, and as infrequently as possible to create the least disruption for our children. I would think the next time we would do a study would be in tandem with bringing Memorial Boulevard online. I'm not saying the whole mic, I'm sorry, I'm just...
Since I have the mic, I do think that that would be an opportune time to take a look at what we've been experiencing the last few years, absolutely agree. There are no other questions, I'll step down. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the schedule of Board of Education meetings for next year. We are scheduled through January of this year already. So you'll look at that, and we've kind of gone back to the old schedule, if you recall, where we would meet the first Monday, first Wednesday of each month, except in July, August, and September, and in that, and those months, we would meet in the second Wednesday of the month. The way the calendar felt this last year, we thought we could get away with just keeping all the meetings on the first Wednesday, but it didn't seem like it worked that well for Commissioners. So we've gone back to the old schedule. So does anybody have any questions about the schedule as proposed?
The April meeting, are we all just going to not show up? Karen got it. It's scheduled for April 1st.
Yes, yes, we got that. Anybody else have any questions? I think the motion would be appropriate to approve the schedule as proposed.
Still moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? If not, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is secondary summer school report. Mr. Covino has the mic. Haven't seen you in a long time, it's nice to see you always.
It's been a while. Good evening, commissioners. You have before you the 2019 Secondary Summer School Report. I'm just going to highlight one or two things. Again, another successful year. I would like to point out, if you look at the statistic page, we were averaging right about where we were last year as far as total students at the high school level. There was a .6 drop, but we were at 145 students total, 195 classes were taken. Last year, it was 144. And that's been, prior to that, it's gone down each year, which is a credit to our high school teachers working diligently to help these students. A big focus with summer school is on the 9th and 10th grades. Those are the grades we want to capture students, we want to help them keep up with their class so that they can graduate in four years. That is a goal in summer school. Well, summer school came on board before I started, I've been involved with it for 26 years now. But when it was first moved, it was, it was eight teachers total were dedicated for students that had failed at each high school. It was Dr. Wasta that removed those and started the summer school program, and since then, it's been very successful in helping students stay on track with the four-year graduation cohort. The one piece that we continue to expand each summer is the online learning opportunities. We removed last summer two teachers from the middle school program, and we introduced online learning, which is supervised by a teacher. It also allowed us to bring in a special ed teacher working with our summer school students for the Language Arts and Math Program. That's proven to be very successful. Students are taking their social studies and science courses online, again, with the guidance of a teacher. Online learning never works without a teacher present in the room, or very rarely works. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to new business, and I don't believe we have any new business. So we'll move right on to building reports, and we'll start with Dr. Dieter.
I'll be making two building reports this evening. The first is on Memorial Boulevard and District Arts Magnet School. Our last meeting, the last meeting of the Building Committee, we reviewed and discussed the design changes in accordance with the recommendations that came through from the Office of School Construction Grants Review, as well as consideration of the feedback from SHPO. We do anticipate that at our next community forum, which is November 21st, we will have a 3D model, as well as interior and exterior elevations and layout design drawings for the public to view. We heard from our theater consultant, Tony Foreman. He reviewed the current theater design with particular attention to the seating layout and other amenities of the theater. There continue to be questions regarding maximum occupancy. At this point in time, we're projecting provisions for 630 guests. We have asked them to go back and look at if there's any possibility of increasing that number. The current layout eliminates any obstructed seating arrangements, and it is an 18-inch seat, which I'm told is larger than what is currently in there, which is a 15-inch seat, so a little more comfortable. We've engaged with the local theater group once again, and we will continue to consult with them to identify ways to collaborate around the theater space, recognizing that this is a project that is of tremendous benefit to both the schools, as well as the city and the community. I've identified that our, we have a public forum coming up. Our next Building Committee meeting is tomorrow night at 6:30. It's upstairs in Room 36, and we encourage the public to attend. And once again, our next community forum will be November 21st in this room at 6:30. We'll have a presentation from the architects, updates from various stakeholders, as well as an opportunity to view a slideshow. We had a local photographer has volunteered his time and expertise, has come into the building and provided, he's archived a current, current status and conditions. So we look forward to that. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. Moving on, the next report that I have is regarding the Mountain View Playground installation. I had the good fortune of going over for the ribbon cutting of the playground over at Mountain View. So this was a collaborative effort. We, partners included Colgate, Shoprite, Terracycle, all these entities joined together to announce the grand prize winner, which was Mountain View School. And the efforts, it was really two-pronged. So students were bringing in and recycling oral hygiene products, primarily plastic, and as well as, we are all recovering from the regular reminders from Principal Hawke about voting. So I still, you know, when I see her name in my email, I get a little... But our efforts paid out in dividends. And as I, one of our parks representatives told the students, "You haven't lived until you have taken a slide down a toothbrush." So that was kind of exciting. We had many people come together. We do want to identify Paul Tornikwendisi, he's the owner of our local Shoprite, and he's a person who does a lot of work to support Mountain View. He's a very humble man and quiet behind the scenes in his support of our school, so I want to make sure we recognize him. Steve Hildner, Community Relations Administrator with Wake Fern. Giselle Kovall, she's the account manager at Colgate. Mayame Mensha from U.S. Director of Brand Partnerships, as well as Lindsay Rivers from Bristol Public Works. Marizapo Sazu for attending the unveiling of the playground and really helping the Mountain View community realize this addition. Special thanks to Zoe Rupert, a 5th grader. Our 5th grade representative, she spoke very impressively about the school's recycling program and the importance of having that space. And then lastly, recognize the efforts. We have two, we have many devoted staff at Mountain View. Among that staff, there were two that really championed this project, and that is our Teacher of the Year, Marcy DeShane, and her colleague Paige Flint. They spearheaded the efforts from the beginning, and I would be derelict if I didn't mention them. So that's all I have regarding the Mountain View Playground. You should go check it out, it's a lot of fun. Questions? Thank you.
Good evening. We have building updates on two of our projects, the first being the Stafford School roof and photovoltaic, which is solar panel upgrades. We have signed a contract and then a contract amendment for the project with Silver Petroselli Architectural and Engineering Firm that was signed on October 28th. The following day, on the 29th, the firm picked up the drawings and conducted the roof walk and scope review over at Stafford School, and construction documents and specs are now underway. Our schedule outlook is as follows. Our next Building Committee meeting will be held November 21st here, where we will preliminarily review the design specs and construction schedule. We will look for those construction documents to be completed in December. In January, we will look to complete the state review. It will go out to bid in February with an award contract being completed in April. Construction will start the day after school concludes in June, and we will look for substantial completion in August of 2020. The project closeout is looking forward to October of 2020. This project has a budget of approximately $2.5 million with a reimbursement rate of 44%, which is inclusive of non-reimbursable HVAC mechanicals, which is mostly exhaust fans on the roof. If there are no questions, I will move on to the Southside School Mechanical Upgrade HVAC Project. We signed a contract with Weston and Sampson Engineering on September 11th. The existing building condition documents were reviewed September 20th. The mechanical preliminary design was reviewed on October 22nd. We reviewed options for design and conventional system replacements. Construction documents and specs are also now underway. Our schedule is as follows. On November 21st, back-to-back meetings with the Stafford Roof Project, that's our next committee meeting. We will, again, review preliminary documents for design specs and construction schedule. We will look for the construction documents to be completed in January for this project, out to bid in February, with an award of bid in May. Construction will begin June of 2020, again, substantially completed, sorry, completed major interior construction as of August, with no delay in returning to school, substantial completion in January of 2021. This project has a budget of $3.6 million. There's no state reimbursement on this project. Any questions?
Have we charged the engineers, architects with choosing the most ecologically sound, low usage, you know, most energy efficient, God, it took a while to get there, equipment possible for this application? And do we have, I know Tim Callahan has worked on this in the past, do we have in place safeguards to ensure that we are able to obtain any reimbursements, rebates, or incentives from ever source?
I know that the first part of your question, that ecologically sound, energy-efficient equipment, was part of the decision-making in the scope, so I will go back and get a firm answer for you whether the most efficient equipment was chosen as part of the building specs. I believe that there's a point system in place that we share with the city. So again, I'll go back to answer the second part of your question and copy to the entire board. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to our liaison and information reports. I'll start with Councilman Kelly, and move this way. Do you have any comments, Councilman Kelly?
Do not.
Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Grabowski.
Well, I mean, I should probably say a few things, because it is my last Board of Education meeting here with you all. So I've obviously been in a unique position over the last four years as a young person to see firsthand how a school system is run, and it's not easy. And tough decisions are made all the time. But instead of, you know, saying some things about me, I would like to take this time to give some advice to the Board of Education that's going to be sitting here at this table next month. And, you know, I've sat through plenty of meetings, and I've noticed some things that have bothered. And it's just some point of advice that I think the following Board should be aware of to make sure we are maximizing our time and that we're working efficiently together. So it's no secret that within the next few years, the Board will probably have to make some tough decisions, right? Budget issues will not go away, right? We're already starting conversation on redistricting. We are opening a brand-new school. Things might get tough. But at the end of the day, any decision that is made by any member sitting at this table should always, always put the kids first in any decision that is made. When we come through that door, we all have our own opinions, our own views. But when we sit here, those should be put away, and any decision should be for the kids. And the next two pieces kind of go hand in hand. Second, we should always work as a team. We are one Bristol Board of Education, right? And I'm going to be blunt, we don't have a Republican Board of Education, we don't have a Democratic Board of Education, we have the Bristol Board of Education. Our political views and ideologies should not come into this building, and we should be working together. And with that, communication, every board member should know what's going on, and should be kept in the loop so they are always making appropriate decisions. There shouldn't be any gotcha moments, or, oh, look, that person doesn't know what's going on. We are a team, we are supposed to be unified. So just, I'm not going to go off on a rant, but just a few things that I think the next Board of Education coming in should be aware of from things that I've seen as a young person and witnessed. But otherwise, I've been very lucky, I'm very grateful that at a young age, Bristol took a chance on me and allowed me to sit at this table and have a voice, and to listen to other people's concerns. I want to thank my fellow board members. I've learned so much from each and every one of you. I've built great relationships with everybody, and those will take me very far in my life. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Rebby?
With Joseph.
Okay. Karen?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Jen? Kristen?
I just have an update for the next Greater Bristol Special Education PTO. The November 12th meeting of the Greater Bristol Special Education PTO will feature a presentation called What's New in Special Education? And it's going to review important laws, regulations, and trends affecting children in special education. And the meeting is going to be held at Bristol Library, 5 High Street in Bristol. It begins at 6:30, and you don't need to advance register for that, all are welcome.
Karen?
I kind of feel like I'm the elephant in the room tonight. We honored Joe and Jeff, because this is their last meeting. It's technically maybe sort of my last meeting. We had an election yesterday. As I always like to tell my fellow board members, elections have consequences. And I did not win. So theoretically, I'm off the board as of tonight, but there's a recount tomorrow. So it's sort of Schrödinger's cat at this point. I'm both on the board and not on the board. Thank you for the two laughs I got for that. All my nerd friends, yay. So, and I do not, I do not anticipate the recount changing the vote from yesterday. So I'm going to take my moment with the microphone tonight. I want to thank everybody I served with. Like Joe, I feel like I learned so much and I built lifelong friendships. It wasn't always easy, but it was always worth it. And I especially want to thank our professional staff, our teachers, our administrators. Every four years, you all are tasked with taking a group of well-intentioned citizens who know virtually nothing about how to run a school district, but firmly believe that they can fix things. I was one of them. We all get in here, we learn that we don't know much. Moving a school district is like steering a cruise ship. It's very slow-going, it's arduous. But the staff here makes it worth it. They extend such grace, grace, and such patience, and such dedication to getting us up to speed. So I thank you all for that. That's been probably the most meaningful part of this experience for me. So, thank you.
I just did want to recognize two people in the audience. Orlando and Amy were both former board members, and I saw them sitting out there, and it just dawned on me that two former board members sitting together, so it's nice. At this moment, we're going to take about a 20-minute break in our agenda, and then the board will reconvene and then go into executive session. So we're going to take a break, have a cake, mingle with each other, socialize a little, and do that. So I guess we have to technically take a motion to pause for 20 minutes.
So moved.
We'll move it second in. All in favor? Go ahead.